Try to just deal with the little things first and hopefully we get through. The first thing I will talk about would be the historical preservation, design, training, meeting, and that was a request for the city to pay twenty-five dollars per a ten day, is that right, Cinnamon? Okay, so if no one objects to that, I would entertain a motion that we fund that twenty-five dollar per person for the training.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Nicole makes a motion, Cinnamon seconds, all in favor of that? And Fred's here with us, and that is unanimous, thank you. Okay, the next would be Magnolia Youth League, and I hope all of y'all have got their regulations, I think they were sent out a couple of weeks ago now. Hopefully you've had time to look at all of those. Chase is there, but if anyone has any comments or any questions as to those, maybe Chase could address them.
Hi Chase.
Hey, how are you?
Good, and yourself?
Doing good.
I have a question of as far, since the drinking fountains are going to be turned off, like the drinks for, like water for the kids, or you know, drinks and so forth, will they be required to bring like their own like water bottle and have their name on it, or how will that be handled?
Most kids bring their own bottle. I guess we should probably notify them that the drinking fountains will be off. I'll check with Heath, he runs the concessions for us, and he might be able to put coolers out or something that they can use, I don't know. I hadn't thought about that. But I'll bring it up at the meeting and just, you know, come up, we'll come up with something, but we can put a few coolers out, I guess, or have a cooler in each dugout. I know a lot of places do that, so it's kind of a hassle to keep the ice in it, but it's something we can do, so I don't know, what do you guys suggest?
I'm just thinking.
If it's really hot out, you know, maybe then, like at certain temperatures, but when it's, most of the time we play in March, and it's, it's just not, it's not that hot, so March and April, well, we start in April, yeah, but it's just not, you know, it's still kind of the cool season, but.
Probably be easier and cheaper even though we're creating garbage, if you just had a couple cases of water, five or six.
Free water?
Just, just for the students that don't bring, not the students, I'm sorry, that I can, every once in a while you see a thirsty kid playing.
Yeah, maybe, maybe offer it to players, everybody just come get water, because we sell water.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I was just thinking of your players.
Players, okay, all right, well, I'll.
You know, keep it inside the dugout.
Yeah, in the dugout and just have a case ready for them and we can pick it up in the night, I'm okay with that.
Still suggest to them that they, they bring their own water bottles if they, if they can or bring water. So that way there'll be two or three different ways that we can get water to them, if, if needed, we'll have water there, they bring a water bottle, that kind of covers it all the way around.
Yep, the, the only, I realize that this is going to be for you herding cats, trying, I'm trying to keep the program going and try to make sure people are, are being safe, especially when they willfully don't want to be. The only thing that, that I wanted to talk about was you have recommending masks, asking everybody to wear masks. The only place that would really concern me would be in the dugout where, you know, kids are sitting in downtime, they're shoulder to shoulder, they're playing, having a mask requirement in the dugout, I would like to see that, but I'd like everybody else to chime in.
We're okay with that, it's, it's up to the board, so if you want to make it required in the dugout. Now, what ages too, if you do it?
I think it's CDC, yeah, cinnamon.
Over age time.
So have some water available, have that, and make it so recommended in dugouts, to have it mandatory in dugouts for above five or five and above. Other than that, any other?
Beyond that, I can't imagine asking, asking Magnolia Youth League to enforce anything else beyond that.
Well, I'll say I walked in the store today with my mask, all the workers had them on. This guy walked up, checked out, and he didn't have a mask, they asked him, where's his mask, and he said, I don't have one. You know, and she says, what do we do in cases like this?
I protect your mask wherever I go, and I was just at the courthouse, and the lady walked in, and she said, oh, I don't have my mask, I never get out, and she was down on her back, and I had extra one in my purse, and she was very thankful, she was able to transact her business.
This guy, he wouldn't have wore one, he was just that tight, you could tell. Okay, anything else then?
Well, I will give a schedule, once they're made, to the chief of police, so that they have a schedule and they can have somebody down there once a night, and they're sitting on the agenda, I know, but a few people have approached me this week about the park director position. I don't know if I should name them all, but basically I, I told Donald who they were, and I told him to go see Miss Vivian.
Address that, it's next meeting, because it's not on the call meeting, but we will, you know, put that on the agenda for next, actually next week now, so. And I told Chase, tell them to come by and pick up applications too, so that way we'll have applications on them by next week, hopefully.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so motion to go ahead and approve them to, Kagan makes a motion, Herbie second.
I have one more thing, Donald, I have one more thing that I just wanted to say to Chase.
Okay.
Chase, when the, I know you're having tryouts coming out and everything, but once that takes place, I just wanted to say, can, in your discussions with the coaches and so forth, just have them strongly urge the parents, I know when it comes to sports, people want their kids out there, they want them playing, and the kids really want to play, even sometimes when they're not feeling well, but could you just strongly urge them, you know, if their child is not feeling well, please don't send them.
It will be added to the coaches' meeting agenda, I've got it right here, so, thank you.
I know the kids are going to want to play, but you know, parent, you know if your child is sick.
Recognize that if they're feeling sick at all, they should not, I'm sorry, that they should not be playing, but we'll, we'll drive it into the coaches when we meet with them, so.
Because I know sometimes the players run short and you want to have everybody there, but, I mean, this is health and safety, you know?
Okay, we had a motion second, so all in favor then? That looks like that's unanimous, okay.
And Chase, thank you for doing this, especially at this time. I know it's a lot of work without a pandemic.
All right, thank you.
And we've never been against sports.
Just want to keep it safe, keep everybody healthy and safe.
Understood, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get off.
All right, the next, next order would be the, the fire department's safety safer grant application request. I'll let Mark address this.
This is basically the same grant that we applied for last year that we didn't get, even though they were ninety-seven percent, so I went to another lady that did Grenada's safer grant the last two years that they've gotten approved by. She's in Alabama, but that paperwork that you got, that was just email correspondence with us, but, and it said the nineteenth, but she's had a medical issue, so she extended it back, the end, the deadline is not until March something. So the, the basic deal with this is she charges fifteen hundred dollars to do the grant application. The last one was two thousand, and this one is if we get the grant, then she charges five thousand at every going for us. She doesn't manage the grant for the three years, it's just for the first hundred and eighty days. The total value of the grant, Vivian helped me out, it's in the neighborhood of four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and if we get it, we pay five more thousand, if we don't get it, we don't pay her but the fifteen hundred, so that's five hundred cheaper than this last lady, or the last company. But that's all I have on that.
That's a hair over one percent fee on the, it seems.
Right, yeah.
But what I needed was, her company says that, it's her company, but she's, she wants a board action that says we can go ahead and move forward with the application for the grant, that's, so that's all I need.
Oh, I appreciated that, she was very clear, she does not write grants for places she doesn't think will be awarded. Honestly, it makes sense for her own time if she's, so much of her income is based on getting the grants.
If we actually fall in the fifty percent category of the rural, so our, our chances of getting the grant are better than, let's say Batesville's was, or something like that, because we do fall under rural.
So I would move to approve engaging this grant.
Cinnamon seconds, all in favor? Okay, now we get into. I have the trench ordinance first, because I think that might be the simpler of the two. Might be. And I know there were some changes put in that was recommended. I think the most glaring change was the residential and the, the three foot deep trench being exempt. But any, I, I know it's seven pages, six pages, something like that, but everybody had a chance to look at the old one, and then this, this one a little bit.
The fees seem reasonable, particularly since our city employees will have to swing by and check the safety precautions. It seems like a, and it's, thank you, Daniel, for making it shorter and sweeter. The same on the dog ordinance, so it definitely is easier to digest now.
Yeah.
No, it seemed, it seemed a low cost, just making everybody aware that there are safety requirements. And I was glad that I won't have to get a permit to run a water line to the garden.
Yeah, and actually he did simplify it and made it very easy to understand, but it is something that we need to put in place, and honestly, I had not really thought about it until we saw some very deep trenches down south in the town, and Mark brought that to our attention, so I think that is something we need to do.
And the water, our water department needs to look into getting box.
Yeah, we, we have priced some, and then we, we've also looked at maybe making our own. And I think that would suffice, was good thick plywood, and some good two by fours, two by sixes or something, really brace them up and all, so I've talked with David about that already.
I would move to adopt the ordinance as written.
Okay, Simon's second? All in favor? Okay, so this will be run into paper, and then we have to have a hearing on it also? Oh, not on it, okay, okay, so we're not, okay, run into paper and then.
Right, it was admitted in writing at our last board meetings. So we had that in writing at the last board meetings, and then we looked at it, but then put it for tonight to vote on it. So.
So we're running the paper and then it?
We'll post it.
Post it then when it, how we do it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, dog ordinance. This one's, you know, a little bit more detailed. But, you know, I know Kagan and Cinnamon are aware of this, we've had a couple of attacks in the last, what, two months, with some dogs running and people been, and it's just time we address this issue. And again, it's been a lot of work put into this, and while, sometimes it may call out certain breeds or something, but it also talks about any breed that's dangerous and stuff like that, so.
It looked, Daniel, it looked like you had taken away the, the breed, and it was based on behavior.
You, you blanked out on the third minute.
It, I just reread it, it looks like you took away the breed, and now it's based on behavior.
Right.
Yeah, went, went from pit bull being called out to dangerous, just dangerous animal, or, yeah, dangerous dog. So, and, you know, but also, the, what I like about it, he refers to the animal control officer or the police department, because, you know, we're heading towards that direction also, we hopefully to have a animal control officer under the police department, so we, we hope that will come about before too much longer also.
We were supposed to advertise for that, was that done?
Yeah, hey, remember, the chief was going to offer it to anybody in-house first, and then if not, to bring it, bring it on the police department, we would have to wait till October to the new budget year, to make a hire under the police department, because that would be over budget, or we could come back and amend his budget.
Yeah, we can always, we don't have to wait.
Yeah, I mean, we, so no one inside has shown any interest. Okay, well, what I would suggest there, well, we may have to bring it up Tuesday night, because that's not really part of the ordinance, but we bring it up Tuesday, not to go ahead and advertise maybe for that position also, and then we can mend the budget if we have somebody apply for it.
So at a simple level, we're asking everybody to spend five dollars to license their dogs, which is not new, we adopted that three years ago.
Right.
We haven't really enforced it since that first year, but it is on the books. The, having actionable ability around the vicious dogs and the running at large dogs, I think the fees came down quite a bit, thank you, Daniel. So it's essentially, it's a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars for the second offense, three hundred dollars for the third offense, unless it's egregious and the judge chooses to do something else within reason, but considering, you know, there's, there are a lot of parents walking small children and in strollers, and I know of one person, new mother, who had to go to the emergency room because her calf was clamped onto by a vicious dog running at large, that does not seem, and it doesn't seem unreasonable to say, keep your dogs on your property or on a leash.
That's right, and, and maybe insurance side also, even though, yeah, they, they may break the law once this, but they also are liable, you know, I'll turn it around, I'll tell you, wow, it may just be a hundred dollars for the first offense. That person can be sued, you know, and that, that goes on the civil part, so they need to really keep that in mind, that, yeah, hey, the law says a hundred dollars or two fifty or so, but I can be sued for the damages, you know, that my dog has done to, to someone, so. This will remind people that.
We're gonna have, just personally, I have a dog that if there's a thunderstorm in the middle of the day, she claws her way out of anything and runs to Alexia at the BTC, and we're gonna have to solve that. This dog, she's a meat and dog who hates thunder, and if we're not home, she will break out, so we're gonna figure that out, but it's, that's our responsibility.
But it's not vicious, no, it's just.
No, but if she's running down the road and she gets hit, that's going to damage someone's vehicle, that's, it's our responsibility, I don't know.
Okay, any, any other comments or anything that needs to be, all right, cinnamon?
I'm sorry, I know that I always ask a lot of questions, but this is kind of important, you know, I think. I do have one question, and I know that we didn't have to consult the nonprofit organization that we give money to every month to help us do part of the job here, but I don't see anybody representing them here, or do they have any input at all? That's neither here nor there, I just was, just asked, do they know that we're even working on this?
They, you, this, part of this ordinance started several years ago, and they were involved in that. Now, the updating and actually bringing it forward to get it enforced is just now being done.
We didn't, we didn't include them on any of this, or?
No.
Because we give them money, and we've got a couple of things in here that we don't have in place, like the city dog shelter, it doesn't exist. So I was just curious as to if we, we had consulted them or had any input, um, um, are they going to be sheltering the dogs that are being so I'll just start at the beginning of my little notes, if you don't mind. Can I have it for about five minutes?
Yeah, let, let Daniel address that first question there, about the sheltering. I think that's part of the agreement with them, if I'm not wrong, but you can correct me, Daniel.
No, that's right.
Be in the ordinance if it's part of the agreement with them?
It is kind of in the ordinance.
It's kind of not, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, we don't want to name them particularly, because.
I know, you just used the phrase nonprofit, which was wonderful. We're not trying to say SCA, that's why I didn't even say the word.
Yeah.
But, you know, are they, are they gonna, is this anything different than what's already being done with the contract that's already in place with the nonprofit organization that we give a thousand dollars a, a month to, for services?
No.
It's not different, not any different.
Other than the, other than we're giving the police the authority to immediately euthanize a dog, but they find that it is vicious and they can't control, which they do that anyways under state statutes and other, other, we're just giving them a city ordinance to shield themselves with also.
Okay, yeah, because I, I didn't look, I'm really honest with you, I didn't have time to pull that and look for comparison, so I'm going to, to you to ask. I'm fine with, with that. You know, in place. There, we would have to address it.
We're giving the city employees more discretion in being allowed to remove potentially dangerous and dangerous animals from the public, and putting them in impound until hearings can be had, and in a situation where they're actually dangerous or causing, you know, or being vicious, they can be immediately euthanized, but otherwise, as I, I put down below, it would, the, the, in most situations, you know, we've, we've got great police officers, so I'm not concerned with them abusing the authority that we're granting to them under this ordinance. Typically, what they'll do is issue a vicious dog citation and a court appearance, and if the judge agrees that that dog needs to be euthanized, this ordinance gives the judge the right to order that the dog be seized and euthanized.
Who, who does the euthanization? That was one of my questions, because it's not.
Yeah, I don't.
Direction on that, who's responsible for that?
Well, I would, no, I would say we would take it to a local vet to do it humanely.
Right, but do you have a contract with the local vet, or they? Someone about that, because some, some vets don't do that, and some do, and some do sometimes, and it's, it's not it's not always straight answer, you know?
veterinarians will give you two different definitions of what humane.
Right, but I've, I've, I've talked to other counties and cities, and they have a certain, certain vet that they have a reciprocal agreement with, and, you know, do we want to do that?
I, I think we might, but I wouldn't want to do any ordinance, because changing.
Not, not in the ordinance, but.
Yeah, I mean, what, what's this ordinance going, in fact, we could look at, would, you know, enter into an agreement with a veterinarian here or in another town if we had to.
Right, yeah, it might have to be out of town. And so, on page three, number three, the last sentence, no dog may be considered vicious if the dog was protecting and defending a human being within the immediate vicinity of the dog from an unjustified attack or assault. I know we looked at definitions at the beginning, but what, what is the immediate vicinity?
Where are we?
Page three, item three. I think that would, and Daniel can address it, but if you have a dog inside your dwelling, someone's breaking in, and that dog attacks, or in your yard, and that dog, you know, even if he's fence, that person goes inside that fencing.
Okay, so this is all only on the owner's property, on number three?
I don't, I don't, I didn't read it that way, I read it also, someone's walking a dog.
Like outside of someone's property, so, so what, what is an immediate vicinity if I'm passing you on a sidewalk?
Well, you gotta attack them, you can't just walk by them, you gotta attack them.
And I say boogity boo, and then the dog bites me, it's my fault? I'm just asking, I don't know.
I, I mean, I don't think saying boogity boo would, would. But I mean, if you, if you struck someone or lunged at someone to cause them harm, which would, I mean, that, I mean.
Yeah. And then whose decision is it a unjustified attack?
Judges.
So if you, if it's an unjustified attack, okay, and the dog attacks the person back, does the dog then get shot, and then we decide later in court who's fault it was?
Probably.
Okay, all right, I'm just, I mean, solely asking, just asking. Okay, I'm on page four, section two, A, third line down. I really didn't understand this, and forgive me, I, I may have read it wrong, but if you live in this, if you live in the city, you have to get a license for the dog over four months of age. But if you don't live in the city or non-resident, you can keep the dog as long as you want to, for longer than thirty days without licensing the dog, why? I'll just start keeping a bunch of dogs from, from the Bay County and not have to pay a license beyond.
The word not was accidentally let out.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering, it's, it, it, I mean, like, they should say not, but I was, that was a question, all right, so we're gonna add not.
Section two, A, said that this requirement should not apply to a non-resident of the city keeping a dog within the city for not longer than.
Okay, I thought that's what the old one said, but like I said, I didn't, I didn't have time to go back.
In other words, when your grandma from Michigan comes and visits, she doesn't.
That's right, yeah, we're not going to license a dog if you're on vacation coming to see. But if you, but if you.
Start boarding dogs for more than thirty days at your house, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta do that. And, you know, if, if grandma stays for three months, you have a temporary license, five dollars, right? Is that how this would work?
Well, I didn't, I missed your question.
If she's going to stay more than thirty days.
If she stays three months, she can license your dog temporarily.
And they're five dollars.
Okay, and people are gonna get real mad about that, whatever, but, you know, and section, okay, number, page five.
Five dollars a year.
Yeah, they're not doing it now.
Coco's license.
He said Coco's license.
She is, she got her tag and everything, she's legal.
On, on page five, section four, B, kind of right in the middle, let's see, okay, so if the dog is found running at large, may be confiscated and pounded, as provided below, and I, I just wrote where. So is that always going to be with SCA, because, you know, they're only limited to cer, so many dogs over a certain amount, they can't house them, so do we have?
Agreement says that we'll take dollars, yeah, they do have to take dollars. That's, that's part of the agreement, yeah.
Okay, so they are still responsible for that?
They are.
Sorry, I, I, I haven't read that ordinance in a couple of years.
But we don't want to, again, in the ordinance, specific contractor. But we don't want to specify again in the ordinance, specific contractors.
No, that's.
Right, you're right.
Yeah, impounded at this time where, because the next section, five, impoundment says in the city animal shelter, which doesn't exist.
Or other sustainable place.
Right, but I, I say or, but we don't have a city animal shelter.
But is, we got an or though.
We.
We got the or, we're good.
I can't hear you.
As long as that or is in there, that's, that's fine. Because if we had to ever have a shelter again, we wouldn't have to go back and amend this ordinance at that point.
Okay, that sounds great to me.
Yeah, open on.
Okay, uh. And I, I did like the part where, uh, at the bottom for an impoundment of any dog, sum of ten dollars and five dollars plus any other expenses incurred, because you're gonna run into dog stuff like this is very expensive. And so I'm glad you added that, so thanks a lot. Um, page six, section six, um. Humanely euthanized by the city? What's that mean? Is that the mayor or who, who does that?
Page six, section six, alright, hold on. Um, that would be the thing that we talked about earlier, going, bringing it to a vet ideally.
That also says, or giving it to the nonprofit or nonprofit. And then, again, that agreement would kick in at that point in time. They have agreed that they will take the dogs after the seven days.
Okay. And the injured or neglected dog at the end of that paragraph, may be humanely euthanized without any waiting period. Um, who determines the injury and how bad the injury is? So if I've got a scratch on my neck, I can still be euthanized or?
Be careful. No, I think, I think a veterinarian would have to, you know, a dog that got ran over or a veterinarian would have to make that call. And then, cause again, they would have to be doing that.
Well, do we need to put that language in there about who is going to assess or determine the level of injury to lead to an euthanization?
I would put as.
Police force to retain the ability to make a call on the side of a road if a dog has been hit, waiting for someone would not be humane.
No, it wouldn't.
Yeah, I would put. A C O, police officer.
Yeah, okay, um.
If we felt like we needed to add something.
I just imagine all these different scenarios that I mean, there, there's a, there's a, I don't know if she's a kid anymore, but a kid, a kid's neighbor just killed the, the dog. Like, I don't know what happened. I have no idea. Everybody's up in arms about it. Um, but oh, this is a really sensitive subject in the city. Dogs and hurting dogs and kicking dogs and protecting dogs and bedding dogs and all these things. Um, and, you know, I just don't know if we need to add anything right there of who determines the level of injury or is that?
Good, like Daniel suggested, we, he could put in there to.
Sole discretion.
Sole discretion of the PD or the animal control officer. We could add that at the end of that.
Okay.
They, they are the only ones who are authorized to euthanize a veterinarian, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, I can just, in my mind, imagine if a dog was ripped by another dog or something and you're not a veterinarian, you're just A C O or whatever. And there could be an argument out there that y'all killed my dog and he could, all he needed was some stitches. I just get a lot of complaints about dogs and I'm neutral. I'm just asking questions based on things that I've been asked in the past. You know what I mean? So thanks for your time.
Yeah, but dogs, dogs are, dogs are a big deal to a lot of people. I mean, like I said, our little house dog, huh. Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanna start a fight, just do something.
So we're saying a do- a dangerous dog or a vicious dog or potentially vicious dog can be leashed and walked only by someone who's over the eighteen?
Cause I, I don't think anybody under that age should be doing it because I don't think they could control them, first of all.
Right, I understand that, but if, if a known vicious, dangerous or potentially vicious dog they, they walk on a leash out in the public or is that kind of contradict what, kind of a little, what we talked about? They have to be on their own property at all times for the, this definition?
Under control of the owner.
We're, we're saying that a potentially vicious dog cause, alright, you got three different levels of dog. There you got a dangerous dog, a vicious dog, or potentially vicious dog. So potentially vicious dog is the least severe of those three categories. So we're saying that the potential danger that that dog could cause on the public, either a small child, an unsuspecting elderly person, anybody really, me, uh, if I'm not paying attention and somebody's walking that potentially vicious dog who's thirteen, just having a good sunny day, not paying attention. That dog can get away from them and cause me severe harm and that the risk of that is so overwhelmingly outweighs that liberty that my risks, that we should protect my risk as opposed to that liberty.
Well, I'm just saying.
The scales of justice kind of situation.
Right, but we're just allowing anybody with a vicious dog that can be walked in town?
Not a, not really vicious.
No, no. Above eighteen, are you saying, are you saying you don't think they should be walked at all?
No, I'm just asking.
Oh, what I'm asking too.
So you go back to the vicious dogs, they have to be kept on their property, right?
No, they can be walked, but the person walking them has to be eighteen or over.
Okay, I got that part. I'm just trying to find this other piece with the. Can't find it now. Vicious dogs. How they have to be, um.
I might be missing something.
And fine. No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, uh, brainstorming.
I think on the definitions, maybe A, what you're looking at, maybe, I don't.
Uh-huh, page two, E. Um, just read it real quick again.
Page two, E, stop, the control. Confinement.
Uh, definitions, I'm happy we can have to keep these dogs that are vicious, potentially vicious or dangerous pinned up.
I think that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, actually, the police chief and I were just talking about that before the meeting, um. So.
It require them to be fenced in. But now we can let them be walked. On a leash.
There is a thing that says, uh, about a leash.
Vicious dogs under section seven, as long as they're on a leash by eighteen.
It says, yeah, on a leash of sufficient strength.
Capable of restraining a dog, yeah. But, but they can't be on public property.
It does, cinnamon, you're right. It does look like the control of owner, when they're on a leash, to comply with the, the section on page six, we just need to take away the on the premises and just leave or secured by a leash of sufficient strength to prevent the dog from escaping from the control of the owner.
Yeah, because it contradicts.
Yeah.
Word.
I don't understand.
Oh, two, no, the control of owner, uh, uh, what I'm hearing, I think Kagan says to confinement a dog to premises.
If I'm a vicious dog, you're telling me over here that control of the owner, that I have to keep my dog in my yard? And then over here in section six and seven. A vicious dog, I can now walk the dog outside of my yard as long as I don't go in a park or walking track or walkway or sports complex, as long as I'm eight years old or physically able to handle the dog. So if, if, if I'm reading it like a layperson, I can either find in my property or I can walk my vicious dog. Which way? Do we want to do that?
Uh, section three is, is, I think, um, section three takes care of what you're concerned about.
Okay.
Unlawful for any owner of a dog that is defined in section one F G and H to fail to keep such dog under his or her control is defined in one E, which is what you were talking about, which with the exception of when such dog is under a leash is defined in section seven A.
Hold on.
The legalism, okay. Yeah, that does, they go back and refer, okay.
Okay, I got. That's all I was asking for.
Well, that's what the, the chief and I were talking about before. I mean, it was, it was, it's a little convoluted. It's a law. Yeah, that's right. I don't know why I disconnected. I apologize, guys.
Oh, that's okay. More thing, uh. I would say, what's the definition of who, the suit, of a suitable material of a leash?
Yeah, the chief asked me about that also.
My sense was it takes away, without trying to define a material, it may, if your leash breaks, it's your fault because you made a bad choice of leash protection.
And do people generally have their dog on a leash that's twenty feet from the person? How are you gonna control? How are you gonna control your dog on a twenty foot leash?
Little zippy with.
Not everybody has those though.
Well, I think it talks about when you walk them in trouble.
On a log chain because it's made of metal and I'm not gonna be able to control my dog with a zippy zap with the dog, with a log chain around my dog net. You see what I'm saying? Not everybody has the fancy mechanisms. Not everybody's gonna, I mean, I could, now I could, you could, people use anything for dog leashes, you know what I mean? And they're not gonna, so how do I control somebody on a, a dog on a leather strap, for example, from twenty feet away? And I don't know what the customary length of dog leashes are. I don't know that. Anybody out there know?
Well, my little retract, of course, I mean, I got a shit, so she's not very dangerous. But her, we walk her in the yard and it's a retractable leash and she can go out about eighteen or twenty feet.
Okay.
Very rarely gets that far away from us because she's only in the yard all the time.
I've seen larger dogs, um, break retractable leashes over and over.
Now, big dogs, surely the people would have enough common sense to. And I know, I know. That's right. Sorry about that statement.
Doberman, but I don't want to be reading, I don't want to spend time with him, but I want to walk him in the park.
Okay, and then, um, section eight, as the that the defecation of the dog, you know, we've had so many complaints about that, especially business owners on Main Street. Um, it's a big deal. Um, so it's great that we included that. I, I really like it. Um, that we don't allow dogs to defecate, um, on property that's not owned by them. Uh, and it says no waste collected there, but I shall be placing a public container. And I write out to the sign, or what? What are you gonna do if I put my dog poop in the, the nice containers in the city? What are you gonna do?
Filing for a hundred dollars.
So that's under the fines as well?
Right.
Okay, so if I see someone putting dog poop in a city container, trash receptacle, and I call Jason, I'm sorry, you're gonna get a bunch of calls about dogs pooping. You've gotta get a lot of calls about. And so I'm asking you for you, you know, what, how, what happens next? If I'm, if I'm the witness.
Well, you know, there might be a, uh, there might be a yeah, there might be a main street, uh, business owner who would feel grievous enough to file an affidavit that that's occurred, if, if it keeps occurring and they've asked the person not to and they're being disrespectful. Uh, you know, I can see most business owners would say, hey, you know, I'm, I'm open, um, I'm operating a restaurant or I'm, I'm operating a coffee shop or what have you. And, uh, every morning you're placing your dog's, uh, business in the trash and by noon, it's, it's so odious, odoriferous, whatever. It stinks so much that people don't wanna come in the door. And so could you, could you do it somewhere else? But if they kept ignoring that, well, then they could enforce it and file something with the P D.
Okay.
I think that's what, what, uh, Gafford was on.
And it's in there really, if he wants to do an affidavit, right?
I mean, he's a real nice guy. He, he probably asked him first, but after.
Well, I think he has.
The third or fourth time.
Done asking. I mean, he asked for three, four years, um. I think he's probably done asking, um. Which is fine. I just wanted to know the procedure, what happens next?
Yeah.
What, what, uh, and then for section ten, number one, I just wrote uh, beside euthanasia again, by whom? And it's gonna be a vet, I guess, that we contract with or something along those lines? Okay, um, and then the court order, is that which court does that go in? City court or?
The city court. And of course, if the owner wanted to appeal, they would have that right to appeal to higher court.
If you're aggrieved by city court decision, you can appeal to circuit.
Okay. So city court and then circuit court. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big thing is, I guess, put that not in, not back in there.
Yeah, put that in there before we publish.
Yeah, and so I, I went back after Ms. Vivian's question about the two weeks. Um, so, yeah, I've got my cart in front of my horse. She was right to point that out to me. That, uh, you're supposed to place it on file with the clerk for two weeks before the final passage or adoption. So, um. You know, I.
Basically, the motion is for Vivian to post it for two weeks and then we can adopt it and then run into paper. Correct?
Let's see here. Shall be introduced in writing in a regular meeting of the governing body of such municipality and shall thereafter remain on file with municipal clerk for inspection for at least two weeks. So basically, you know, every time we brainstorm as a group, we have to brainstorm as a public body in a public meeting. That's burdensome, but it's supposed to be because we're supposed to be transparent. So we would brainstorm tonight, next week, we'll, we'll say this is what we want to publish or put in the post for two weeks. And then we can come back, um, after that two weeks and have a special meeting and adopt it or just wait till, um, March, excuse me, April, and then it'll go into effect, man. It's just the way it is. Things aren't supposed to happen in government.
I, I did have a, a one more question and it might not have to be addressed in this ordinance. Uh, it may or may, I don't know. Um, but if, if someone else outside of the A C O or the police department, um, determine, they make their own determination whether a dog is vicious or not and kills the animal of, on their own decision, what, what is the penalty for that?
If somebody kills their own dog?
No.
No, somebody kills somebody else's dog and said, oh, it was vicious.
There is a state statute that don't put the penalty on dogs.
That would fall back under state statutes.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Yeah, and it's, there's a lot that goes into that. I think there's been some pretty good trials in the past about somebody killing somebody else's dog way back when.
That usually results in a civil lawsuit.
Okay, so.
Right, okay, yeah. Thank you.
I would move to.
So I'll, I'll make those changes.
I'm sorry. Publish the ordinance to post the ordinance with Vivian, whatever the next step is, I would move that we do that with the edits that.
Yeah, okay, yes. Yeah, that, that would be a good motion that way. We could take it like that. Okay. Nicole, second, so I'll in favor of that? Okay, and. Okay, and that finishes our call for tonight, thank y'all, uh, didn't say too long.
Well, thank you for your time.
Well, it it was some good points brought out that we needed to look at, I mean, like I said before the meeting, Daniel and the chief was looking at this ordinance, so hey, you know, maybe we need to tweak this or look at this, so uh, lots to digest, but I thank y'all, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Senator makes a motion, Harvey seconds, all in favor. All right, thank y'all.